I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, November 7th, 2024. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. First item on our agenda is a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led tonight by Councilman Chalos.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Chalos. Michelle, can we have a calling of the roll, please?
Councilperson Azar, Councilperson Bowland.
Present.
Councilperson Chalos.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Dinkle.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Lautermilch. Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Seven are present, two are absent.
I received communication from Councilman Azar and Councilwoman Lautermilch that they would not be present with us tonight, so. Next on the agenda is 30 minutes of time for public comments, and those need to be items that are not on our agenda tonight. We ask you to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, and we'd like for you to limit your comments to things that are germane to council business.
Well, actually, it is germane to council business.
Germane.
Donald Wayne Hyde, 1411 Papa Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. You may not think this is germane to council business, maybe.
Right.
But first of all, I want to tell the council that the election is over, and we have a new president, which surprised the heck out of me, but I don't care. I didn't vote for him the first time, last time. I never voted for him at all. That's why I'm so surprised he keeps winning. But anyway, based on what I've heard on the news, all we got to do is make sure that the difference between the Democrat and Republican parties, senator and congress-wise, is not too many. If that's the case, I expect Congress and the Senate to make sure they keep him in order. And since he's already been President of the United States and we survived four years of it, I have no doubt we'll survive these four years. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Is there anyone else who did not sign up for public comments that wishes to make a comment at this time? All right, we'll close public comments. Michelle, any corrections to the journal of the preceding meeting?
There are none.
Communications from the mayor?
Good evening, Council President Bowlin and members of the city council. Some refreshing good news today. We received $1.5 million through the Community Crossing Grant Program. Governor Holcomb found it in his best interest to support the state's infrastructure by giving to local units of government. This is a matching grant, so we put $1.5 million into the pot. We receive another $1.5 million. This will bring our paving for next year to a total of $3 million. Why is that important? Well, it used to be $2 million. So we're very happy to see that 50% increase. The Engineering Department will unveil their plan later this winter, similar to how we did it last year. Again, so we rate our streets on a scale of 1 to 5 and use a data-driven approach to say, hey, look, we got to target the streets that are worse. And, you know, we're really trying to boost our rating up, right? Our average rating of street quality. So we will unveil that plan to this council. We'll put it on a map. We'll put it on Data Hub, so all of our residents can see the paving plan for the rest of the year. Next week, you will see some, a couple of last-second paving projects. Some of our other projects came in under bid. So Brad Utes, our Assistant City Engineer, rolled in some smaller projects to finish us out through the year for some smaller ones. They are available in the city's newsletter that we sent on November 1st, as well as online in a news release. I'm going to forget some of them, so I won't even try. We've got some great reports from department heads tonight. And pending any questions, that's all I've got.
Councilor questions for the mayor?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is reports from city officials. And first on the list is Brent Nice for the cemetery.
Good evening, council. So, in 2024, the Terre Haute City Cemetery's Department completed several key projects to improve our services and infrastructure. These initiatives were essential for maintaining and enhancing the facilities as well as ensuring sustainable operations for the future. Below is a summary. Shop parking lot improvements. The Terre Haute Street Department leveled and added rock to our shop parking lots, significantly improving accessibility and durability. We did tree removal at Woodlawn Cemetery. In collaboration with the Terre Haute Waste Water Department, we successfully removed hazardous trees at Woodlawn Cemetery, enhancing safety and aesthetics. We had drain replacement at Highland Lawn Cemetery. The Terre Haute Waste Water Department replaced failing drains on the east side of Highland Lawn Cemetery, which has helped mitigate erosion and water drainage on the grounds. We did equipment upgrades. The city of Terre Haute provided much-needed new mowers, allowing us to maintain the cemeteries more efficiently and reduce long-term maintenance costs. We're doing alarm system updates. To reduce phone expenses, we began updating our alarm systems to wireless, a move that will both lower cost and improve system reliability. Grave plating and expansion. We've initiated the plating of new graves, expanding our available options for citizens and enhancing our capacity to serve the community's needs. Price adjustments. We implemented a minimum 25% price increase across all services to increase revenue while remaining affordable to our citizens. These accomplishments reflect our commitment to providing a high standard while maintaining resources effectively. Thank you for your support, which has been invaluable in achieving these improvements. We look forward to continuing our work and to maintain the beauty of Terre Haute cemeteries for our community. In 2024, the Cemetery Department continued its maintaining and enhancing our city cemeteries, ensuring they remain respectful, peaceful spaces that honor our community's history and provide comfort to our families. Our work focused on collaboration with other departments, facility upgrades, and preparation for future projects. Some of the projects for 2025, interdepartmental collaboration. We aim to strengthen partnerships with other city departments to achieve projects that are beyond the scope of the Cemetery Department alone. By working in conjunction with these teams, we maximize our resources and improve our ability to carry out impactful initiatives. Chapel and bell tower renovations. We plan to continue collaborating with Indiana Landmarks and the City Engineering Department to advance our chapel and bell tower renovation projects. We are pursuing grant opportunities to secure the necessary funding and support a well-developed renovation plan. Ash garden area upgrades. To offer a more welcoming environment for our visitors, we intend to upgrade the ash garden area, creating a space for better serves our citizens and improved landscape with seating options. Facilities improvements. Renovate and upgrade our shop area, ensuring we have the tools and spaces necessary to maintain a high standard. Update restroom and break room facilities for improved functionality and comfort for our staff. Office staffing and transition. Our current office manager is planning on retiring in June 2025. To ensure a smooth transition, we would like to hire an individual who can be trained in all aspects of our office operations. This will support continuity and efficient service for our community. We look forward to the opportunity to address these goals and contribute positively to the city of Terre Haute by focusing on collaboration, preservation, and improvement. We are committed to maintaining the city cemeteries as places of dignity and heritage for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council have any questions or comments? Councilman Nation?
Brent, thank you so much for that update. I know what the chapel is, but what's the bell tower?
The bell tower is the entrance way.
Great.
And we're having some issues with that, the tuck point, and, you know, it was flooding a long time, so, until wastewater put in some dry wells and things for us and corrected the problem. There's a lot of damage done to that.
Yeah, I was out there last month for Mike McCormick's funeral, and I saw the condition of the bell tower, the building at the entrance. From the exterior, I didn't go in, but I saw that, like, the pillars are, obviously, have problems. I'm glad that you're pursuing work on those settings. I'm glad that you're working with Indiana Landmarks on that. I remember back over a quarter century ago when then-state Senator Jerry Kearns got some money from the state to rebuild that bell tower and make it great back then, but that's been a long time ago. The building needs help now. Thank you very much for your help and for the update.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have Brian Cottie, Terre Haute Street Department.
One of our, a few of our key accomplishments for 2024, we were able to come in under budget. We will, a few of the examples are, we buy local parts, we, oil and supplies around here, so that's, that's brought in our supplies a lot cheaper. We've worked with the wastewater treatment, different projects as far as cleanup throughout Terre Haute Parks Department, waste, the Ray Park, golf courses, and clean up the debris throughout the park. We've worked hand-in-hand with the cemetery as far as, as you said, is, clean up their parking lot, so made it easy for them, you know, better parking for those guys. We've taken down some trees and pushed over brush in their areas also. We've assisted with the Engineering Department as far as, some of the smaller projects as far as, like, sidewalks that need immediate attention for disabled kids or handicapped kids. We've done some of that for them. We've worked with the arborists as far as, there's been a lot of dead trees throughout Terre Haute, and we've been able to come in and help her lower the cost on that, because we have a guy who's a real good tree climbing guy, so, yeah, we have a guy who's able to do that. Other than that, key opportunities that we have for 2025, we've able to work with the city of Sullivan and take over their signal department as far as, you know, they'll reimburse us for anything we come out and help them with their traffic section, anything like that. Other than that, that's all we have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councilman Chalos?
Not a question. Brian, I already expressed this to you, but as far as the fifth district, you've done a fantastic job. I want to give you some public kudos. I've heard nothing but good, always responsive, so I just want to thank you for your, for your good work.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Nation?
Brian, thank you also. I note that both of these reports highlight some cooperation between your department and the wastewater treatment staff. And it's been echo, I just want to echo comments that have come from this council before about how good it is to hear about that. It's noteworthy that you're helping remove trees. You know, our climate action plan that the council received a couple of months ago points out that we're likely to see a lot of dying trees as things change. And it's incumbent upon the city to figure out what the right species are to replant and have a plan to do that going forward, just recognizing the reality of climate change. Again, I appreciate your work, and I appreciate your cooperation with all the other departments. I yield.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report from Ed Stewart, Wastewater Treatment.
Good evening, council. As with great pride, I present the Terre Haute Wastewater Utility Annual Report for 2024. Over the past year, we have continued our mission of providing efficient, sustainable, and reliable wastewater services to the residents and businesses of Terre Haute. Despite various challenges, including management change, me, shifts in the U.S. EPA environmental rules and regulations, our team has worked diligently to ensure our operations remain resilient, innovative, and forward-thinking. This year has seen significant progress in improving infrastructure and optimizing our treatment processes. Through strategic investments and collaborative partnerships, we have maintained the highest standards of service, but have also made strides toward greater sustainability, supporting the long-term health of our local waterways and community. As you will hear in this report, you will find insights into our financial performance and initiatives aimed at protecting our environment while meeting our growing needs of Terre Haute. We remain committed to advancing our operations in ways that benefit both the city and our treatment plan. Thank you for your continued support and trust as we look forward for another year of progress. Some of our key accomplishments in 2024. We repaired a 24-inch force main at Lafayette and Haythorne from the Park Avenue Lift Station. It has been identified, this area's been identified as needing repair for more than a decade. It includes over 350 force mains from Park Avenue Lift Station out to Hawthorne and Lafayette Avenue. We repaired a 15-inch gravity main on US 40 and Stop 19 in Sealyville. We will be doing a future study in this area for structural integrity going on the next year. We completed a full upgrade of the airport, Howard subdivision, Brighton Hall lift stations. That includes pumps, bases, rail packages, floats, vault doors, and electrical panels. We installed two 10-horsepower pumps at 10 and 1/2 of Voorhees Lift Stations. These pumps were replaced to normal wear and tear. We were able to purchase a Mr. Manhole Machine, making each manhole repair 80% faster. Since then, we have raised more than 35 manholes to street level, repaired 74 inlets and storm sewers, and have made over 24 sanitary sewer repairs. We participated in community events such as Touch a Truck and Trunk or Treat and community cleanup. Pre-treatment performed 282 grease trap inspections, 120-plus automotive inspections, 16 industrial inspections, and 25 dental office inspections. They have also participated in Earth Day events at St. Mary of the Woods in Indiana State University, as well as held contractor workshops on the NMS4 program. Some of the opportunities for 2025. The Hoat City Center Mall Lift Station upgrade is under, under construction as we speak. This station has needed replaced for some time. With this lift station replacement, the city will be able to meet the needs of Hoat City Center for many years to come. Park Avenue Lift Station upgrade. After the 24-inch Park Avenue Force Main repair, we quickly realized how inadequate the infrastructure servicing our far north end was. With this upgrade, we will be able to ensure the citizens of North Terre Haute will continue to get the best service possible. Challenges we may anticipate in 2025 are always supply chain issues with the arise, when they arise, but we're, with pre-planning, our jobs to anticipate these problems will be, will be just fine going forward. Rising costs of operating expenses will always be an issue at the wastewater treatment plant. And we're going to be doing a beginning stage of upgrading our facilities, our supervisor control and data acquisition computer system, also known as our SCADA. We are projecting to come in under budget this year, and we will be looking to increase revenues with the changes in the disposal fees coming forward. I'd like to give a special thanks to these departments for allowing us at the wastewater utility to assist them in showcasing unity and making our community a better place to live. We were a part of, we built a mini-city hall inside of Deming School, also known as Biz Town Finance Park, and that was a lot of fun for our guys to do that. The Police Department, we helped build an obstacle course for the special response team, and we helped build a dump tank for the block party events and the other various events they have. We had a lot of fun doing that. At the Fire Department, we helped repair concrete drives in Firehouse 9. We built equipment storage racks for Firehouse 5 and repaired rusted and corroded doors at Firehouses 5, 7, 8, and 11. Parks Department, we assisted with waging up after the high wind storms, and we're continuing to do that today. Street Department, we've assisted with wide cleanup from high wind storms, and our Building and Grounds Department have also had the opportunity to assist removing graffiti from the new overpass on Margaret Avenue. We've helped in redevelopment. We've cleaned up 16 overgrown abandoned lots this year, assisting code enforcement to cover some of the VIP median lawns to help the lawn care and the maintenance of those, those areas. And in cemetery, as Brent said, he kind of stole my, stole my thunder there. We assisted with his road repair and installed 40-foot of culvert pipe in Highland Lawn Cemetery. I'm in a unique position. I have a group of guys and women that absolutely love to help all the other city departments, and I couldn't be more proud of them. That's it.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions?
I just want to commend his people because they've helped my office out, and they're going to be helping us out again next week. So whenever I reach out, they're there, and they're so friendly, and they're so nice. My ladies love them.
Thank you.
Councilman Nation?
Just real quick. Ed, I see your people out in the community a lot doing good work. Thank you. Bravo.
Thank you.
I think also to add to that, you've got a really diverse skill set amongst employees, and so that, you know, gives us opportunity to share the workload, and we really, really appreciate when we hear that.
We absolutely love them.
Kind of collaboration. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Michelle? You're not missing anybody, are we?
You ready?
Yes.
Your first item will be appropriation 41, 2024, $108,000 from ARPA number 0199 to ARPA Consulting Services number 0199-0006-03439410. As a reminder, you must vote to take action.
Good evening, Council President Bowlin and members of the Terre Haute City Council. And one, George Azar, who must have snuck in when I was on my phone. What you have before you today is an appropriation for $108,000. So why this amount? Previously, several years ago, a contract was signed for monthly payments. So usually in consulting services, it's like anywhere from 1% to 3% of the total grant amount for administration. And it was a 1% deal for the total amount of ARPA services that was signed, I think, two years ago, but I'd have to check that. The reason why this amount's $108,000 is, my mindset was to just get it approved and then pay out all of next year's fee just once. Of course, we're still using the services, but it's just a little bit easier to budget and streamline that way. That being said, I do want to provide a quick update on ARPA as it stands now. The Indiana American Water Project, you will see some information in about three and a half weeks about the status of that project. Two pockets of that neighborhood did have the right percentage to opt in, so we will be adding water to a very small portion of Terrytown and be communicating with those households in the coming weeks. And a lot of people will then go, well, Mayor, what are we going to do with the rest of that money? We are going to bring before you a kind of a change in our ARPA plan and take money that would have gone to the Terrytown Water Project that the residents chose not to participate in, right? So they made this decision not, not to be a part of this program and recycle those funds to fund a Deming Park pool renovation. It should fund about 50% of it, and then we budgeted in the casino for next year, in 2025 and 2026, to capture the rest of what we need. Of course, we will apply for some more grant-based funding, but we've got a team coming down to do a renovated design to the current pool and, and get that process in motion. I've got about 20 designs of Deming Park pools from the last three mayors in a cabinet in my desk. And folks, I'd really like to be the mayor to actually get this thing renovated. So we are going to take this, apply it to the, to the community for a larger project. One reason why it's not going to be that Marshall, Illinois, $15, $25 million pool is, a lot of those pools have had to raise their rates, and I am very against raising the rate for the current pool, so we will build what we can afford with some water slots and some more aquatic features. But again, it's, it's what we can afford, and we will not have to raise rates for the kids in our community. So balancing some things there, and we'll also finish up the last $24,000. There's a couple of other things that I'm looking at. I know that's a lot for appropriation 41, 2024, but did want to use the opportunity to provide an ARPA update.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on appropriation 41, 2024? Hearing none, closed public comments and open council discussion. Councilwoman Hinton?
Mayor, so are you saying after we do Deming, there's $24,000 left in ARPA?
Yes, there's a $24,000 bucket remaining.
That's it?
That's it, yeah. Well, the rest have been obligated. That does not mean they've been spent. They've been obligated. And then we are confirming, Jessica and I, with Baker Tilly and our legal team, whether or not we have to, like, bring it next year to technically re-appropriate it. We are going to plan to do that anyways, just so that way we're safe. Just the way that federal audits and regulations are, we want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So honestly, like, from here on out, when you hear ARPA and, you know, when, when folks report on ARPA, it is really essentially re-codifying what has already been approved. You cannot change it, excuse me, but you do need to re-appropriate it.
So how would one access the $24,000?
So we are evaluating, we're going to use it as revenue loss, so likely an equipment purchase. We are not able to add it to a nonprofit grant program or a small business program. A lot of the programming that we have used ARPA for does take months at a time, so we are evaluating within the city how we can supplement one of our city departments with that.
Okay. I yield. Councilman Dinkle?
So will this be the, the final amount that's due for consulting services for ARPA?
This one is. Yes, yep.
Thank you. I yield.
Anyone else?
Madam President, if there's no further questions, I move to take action on appropriation 41.
Second.
We have a motion to take action on appropriation 41, 2024, made by Councilman Azar, second by Councilman Chalos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can now take action.
Move to approve appropriation 41, 2024 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to approve appropriation 41, 2024, made by Councilman Azar, second by Councilman Chalos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation 41, 2024 is approved. Michelle?
Appropriation 42, 2024. $195,060 from PS Lit Fire 0751-0016 to Building Repair and Maintenance, PS Lit 0751-0016-03437060. As a reminder, you must vote to take action.
Michelle?
Good evening, President Bowlin, council. Yeah, so we've worked hard all year long selling surplus items that the Fire Department didn't need, or we've procured new stuff. In particular, Engine 9, new Engine 11. I had a surplus of five engines. I sold two of them. Now I have three good ones left in case, you know, we need them when our front line apparatus are down. I've sold a couple of maintenance trucks, some miscellaneous PPE and boots, things that weren't needed anymore. But I've sold $195,060. I'd like to use that surplus money for new windows, doors, garage door openers, ceiling repairs, insulation, HVAC systems. I have some firehouses that have HVA systems that are 24-years-old, and they're, they're just not repairable anymore, and I'd like to get that done. I've exhausted my building repair and maintenance this year. I've already fixed some doors throughout the firehouses. We just recently finished all the windows, new, brand-new windows in Station 311 and 6, and I'm, I'm needing this money for Station 7, 8, and 9. That's one of my big purchases, is replacing all of the 25, 30-year-old windows that are in that. I think it's going to help with our budget next year. I think it's going to help with electric and gas costs, so.
All right. Thank you. Any one from the public want to comment on appropriation 42, 2024?
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. I live in 1411 Papa Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. I would like to, first of all, tell the Fire Department, yeah. They's doing a good job, and I really mean that. However, with that said, I'd like to point out something to the city council. If there's a fire, and I'm, I'm saying if, and it happens to your house, and again, I'm saying if, and it's not going to happen, but we're just going to imagine it. Wouldn't you like the Fire Department to show up on time and have all their equipment working so they can put out that fire as fast as it can so the house could be repaired, not tore down and rebuilt? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Any other public comments? Okay, our closed public comments and open council discussion. Councilman Dinkle?
Bob, I just want to commend you for being creative with this and making sure we, you know, getting rid of things that we don't need and recapturing that money. getting rid of things that we don't need and recapturing that money so we have that budget available to us. Just, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Are you?
Anyone else? Councilman Chalos?
Same thing also you and the chief. Appreciate you guys doing that. From a guy that stops for coffee once in a while because I'm a retired firefighter and seeing some of these changes, it's really nice. When I started, many, many moons ago, we used to call it downtown station in Wally's Water World because anytime it rained, you didn't have to go to a water park. To come in on you, Derek probably remembers those days. So it's nice to see these updates. And updates have been done before this, but it's nice to see these updates done. I do have a procedural question though, and I don't know if someone from the council or maybe the attorney can ask. Now, these funds were bought by, gotten by equipment that was bought by the EMS fund?
Correct.
Then I'm curious why it doesn't return to the EMS non-reverting fund versus going to the PSLit? And maybe things have changed or I don't know if, maybe never changed. It's been about eight years since I've been on here, so. And I'm all for this. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, it's a procedural question more than anything.
If I understood the quest, the question correctly, Councilman, why isn't this going back to the original fund that procured it? Is that?
Right, because those are equipment that were originally bought, so I would think any funds coming from that would go back to the EMS fund, which.
Yep, yep.
Technically, Councilman Chalos, some of like the items, like reserve engines as well as PPE, those aren't all bought out of EMS. We do have occasions where PSLit is used for some equipment purchases, so I think that's why. But we'll, we'll get back to you with the exact reason why. But I do know those two items itself do come from separate accounts.
Okay, and that's, I'm all for it. I'm just, it was more of a procedural question, just to figure that out. Because it may make the process easier for them to.
Sure.
Are you?
All right. Any other council questions?
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
If there's no further discussion, I move that we take action on appropriation forty-two twenty-two four.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to take action on appropriation forty-two twenty-two four made by Councilman Nation, second by Councilman Dinkle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can take action on appropriation forty-two twenty-two four.
Madam President?
Thank you.
Councilman Nation?
I move for approval of appropriation twenty, uh, forty-two twenty-two four as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to approve appropriation forty-two twenty-two four made by Councilman Nation, signed here by Councilman Dinkle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation forty-two twenty-two four is approved. Michelle?
General Ordinance thirteen twenty-two four, admitting City Code Chapter Seven, Building and Construction Regulations, Sections seven dash one through seven dash sixty-one. As a reminder, you need to vote to take action on all general ordinances.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. So I'm here tonight to present this. I'm going to back up a little bit though and give a little bit of update on how the right-of-way permits went. Just, just to kind of show our math did work out good. And then I'll kind of run through how we got here. And then we'll go through a quick outline. I'll try to be quick. I know there's, I heard there's a basketball game tonight. So right now, we have four months of the right-of-way data in. It's a little skewed because construction season doesn't run even all months of the year. So it's a pretty good indicator for about half of the year. It's going to slow down a lot through November, December. We've sold two hundred and sixty-seven permits, collected a total of seventy-nine thousand five hundred and change. Of that, fifty-six thousand went to engineering non-reverting to fund our position. I think our estimate for that position was about a hundred and ten thousand, so we're pretty well right on the money with our calculations. And then twenty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars went to MVH non-restricted or MVH restricted, which ultimately is the paving to accommodate those, those road cuts and any issues associated with them. So I think we saw a pretty good success there. Apologize for not getting that in somewhere else, but it was something that came to my attention. So how we got here, I appreciate you, at the start of the year, you appropriated some funds so that we could hire a lead building inspector. Until that point, I was serving as city engineer and lead building inspector, and that was a lot. And without Jason on board, we wouldn't have been able to get here. But we did, I got an opportunity to learn a lot of great things that could get better. This is a pretty big update to the building permit and, and building regulations, so stick with me. The other opportunity we had is our city work system. If you're not familiar with it, back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we were still selling permits on carbon copy handwritten paper. We could get them out the door quick, but looking back to find information or dealing with complicated permits or calculations was, was a struggle. So we wouldn't have been able to do this without making that upgrade. And we continue to make upgrades daily with that, I think. And the volume of permits we're moving, just so you know, these are right-of-way building permits, everything. We're moving an average of about two hundred and seventy a month. So it's, it's quite a bit of work and quite a bit of information. It's important that we, we get these standards in place. So I'm going to kind of run through a quick outline. If there's something I skip over that you feel is important, you can feel free to interrupt me and ask. There's, some of it stays the same. Some things are just clarifying, you know, maybe a word added here or there. And then, you know, there's, there's some things that are, I don't really want to read them out loud for long because there, there's a lot of information there. And I, I know you've had this, and I trust that you've had a chance to review it. We did have a building advisory committee meeting on that. President Boland was on the committee and we allowed input from, from people in the construction industry and the trades as well as, as well as President Boland from the council. So I'm going to kind of skip through the first parts as it's really minor. We did make a slight change to the building advisory committee. We just simply clarified how long those terms of those members lasted. And then if you get into the building code sections, we updated all the building codes to the current standards. Some of those were outdated, so this is just kind of cleaning up. We did add one code to that that was not out before, and that's the International Property Maintenance Code. That's probably going to come into play later. It doesn't have a whole lot of impact with this code, but while we're adopting codes, that was a good one to adopt that deals with standards that's recognized in, in all the world for how property should be maintained. So we start getting into, I feel like anywhere there's a, a fee change, we should consider it. When you get to Section seven thirty, the violation, we raised the minimum violation for not getting a permit from one hundred to two hundred dollars. And, and it's just simply so that we can help with our enforcement. And we do work with people as much as we can. So then when you skip to Section, we'll get into more change later, we're jumping around right now. When the permits are required, the same section. There was one section of permits was not required, so you could replace up to twenty percent of your plumbing without a permit or an inspection. We felt that it was prudent to strike that. In the event that somebody's replacing up to twenty percent of plumbing, we feel that they should begin to permit and they should be getting a plumbing inspection. You know, this may not seem like a big deal on a single-family house, but imagine a hundred-unit apartment complex could replace twenty percent of their plumbing without a permit or an inspection. And water is, you know, water is, water's life, but it's also our enemy if it can enter a building where it's not supposed to. So it's something we have to keep a close eye on. You'll see that same, that same thing happen in the commercial buildings as well as the residential. We did strike Section seven thirty-two master permit. The reason behind that is we're looking to convert with this code all permits to essentially master permits. Previously, you would buy a building permit or an electrical permit or whatever permit, and they were all fifteen dollars a piece. And you could have all those permits in one job, or you could do a master permit. City Works has made it easier for us to say, buy a permit, add all of your subcontractors, and it can serve as the permit for the entire job. So this is, you know, also keeps it easier for us so we only have to track one permit for an entire construction job and have all that information right there. We added a new type of permit. This has been in place, but it's kind of just codifying it. It does add a fee, so this is a plan review permit. Every commercial, industrial, multifamily, residential property in the city has to go through a plan review process, both in engineering for site plan review and drainage, as well as building inspection to make sure they're meeting the current building codes. We've had a permit in place for this since we've had City Works, but there's been no fee. What we're doing is just codifying the permit. We are adding a fee because there is significant costs and time. I've spent months before working with, with plan reviews. So it seems prudent to add a fee, and we'll get to fees later, so that, you know, taxpayers aren't, aren't footing the bill for something we have to review multiple times. We want to put the fee to do it on, on the person submitting it. And the other thing we're doing is when you get to that section and procedure for building, obtaining a building permit, all of our permits are through City Works now. It's just updating the process so that the code recognizes how we sell the permit through City Works. Well, sorry, I say City Works in here, we're a little more vague than that, just so we can stay up with future times. But the process outlines the steps to take through our current online permitting program. I would note that we do add some things in the code that weren't previously there that have been, you know, a step we take, like the requirement for a site plan for non, non-commercial, non-industrial, the single-family and duplexes. We wanted to add that because we did start running into problems with setbacks and people building things. And we'd really like to get, take care of those before it's built rather than after. So this is a step really just to protect those that are building because it, it does happen and it's not fun afterwards. One of the things I did pick up, both from our building inspectors and my short stand as buildings, lead building inspector as well, and we hear it from communities, condemned properties, they can be a little bit of a struggle for us. So we are planning to address condemned properties to some extent in this. So in order to get a condemned property permit, we've got some additional things you'll have to submit. You're going to have to have a plan to address all of the upgrades necessary. And remember, if, if a property gets condemned, it's, you know, whether it was built in nineteen ten or nineteen fifty, the building code that applies to that structure now is today's building code. So we need a plan to get that, that up, up to spec. We want to schedule for the work. We're not asking a whole lot and we want a detailed budget. And then proof of ability to perform the work. So we want to make sure that, it's, it's just a way for us to help make sure that those that are taking on these, these big projects that may be bigger than they recognize are capable and do have a plan and know what's ahead of them. So another thing that we'd added for eligibility for a permit is that the applicant has no outstanding fees to the city. So we just want to make sure we're not selling permits to people that haven't paid permits. And I guess one thing I'll note that applies in a lot of places on this, you'll see under Section N in that section, is that all of the fees for the permits are going to go to engineering non-reverting. This is a change. In the past, they'd went to the engineering general fund. And we're going to send them all to non-reverting. This is kind of the same model we went with with the right-of-way permits. We plan to pay our staff out of permit fees so that the time spent on building permits, building inspections and dealing with that is borne by the people creating the work and not paid out of the general fund, which is ultimately the taxpayers' money. So we want the ones creating the work to pay for the work. Previously, the permit fees did go to the general fund, so we put in next year's budget a service fee to cover that and offset that. But we're trying to be, trying to get a business model here where building inspection can support itself and plan review can support itself and we can create a, something that really functions well and pay for itself. As we move through, you'll see some, several sections that are struck out. And those are just really just no longer valid in today's world with the permitting system we have. The next big section that you'll see is expiration of renewal permits. So our existing code for expiration of building permits is that they expire a hundred and eighty days after you stop work. So in theory, a person can buy a permit and drive a nail every day and still be working. And, and this would go on and on. And we would have work to do, we would have inspections to do, and, and it just doesn't seem quite right. So we, we did want to apply an expiration date to the building permits. The other thing that we get stuck with that we've noticed a weakness in City Works is that permits don't close. If it's a permit that doesn't require an inspection or doesn't have a reason to close it out, we have all these open permits hanging out there. And so that kind of forces us to go out and drive by or decide if they're done and, and figure out where they're at. So having an expiration date helps us keep track, but it also doesn't leave the open-ended permits hanging out there and we're better able to manage that data. So what we're looking at is a two-year expiration date for new construction. Seems pretty reasonable. We, we worked over these dates. Jason, Jason spent a lot of time on this with me and he's very familiar and worked with me on that. A one-year for remodels and repairs for that. We will note that all building permits are non-transferable, so if you were to sell the property or whatever, transfer it in another way, if the works continue, a new building permit would need to be purchased. A lot of times we see changes in work, changes in quality of work. We just want to make sure that we're staying on the same page there. And all land disturbance permits expire one year. Again, land disturbance permits are something that we've had but never charged for and, and had a little trouble enforcing. So we want to make sure they have an expiration date and that we're staying up on those. And that they're also very time-consuming. They require a lot of inspections and we want to be able to recoup that and not, not place it on the citizens. So with expirations, we do have to have renewals. There is a renewal fee proposed here, and the renewal fee is fifty percent of the original permit fee. We tried to set timelines where we don't expect too many renewals, but if you're going to expire, you got to have a way to renew. We circle back to the condemned buildings again. So condemned buildings historically, I don't know if it's been codified in the past, but historically, if they've been through hearing, they expire in thirty days. If they've not, they expire in ninety days. This gives us the ability to review and inspect, make sure they're making adequate process before we approve, approve any renewals. And then for condemned properties, the maximum renewal period is one year. After that, you're going to have to apply for a new permit. It also, I mean, this just helps us keep the checks and balances and make sure they're making progress that should be made because condemned properties are a struggle at times. And I apologize, this is long. So it looks like now we get into permit fees. So we put a lot of work into the permit fees, and I know I showed up with the right-of-way permit fees and I gave you all of my math. I did all of the same math here, but this was a little more complicated and I couldn't get a spreadsheet to fit on a page. I'd be happy to share my spreadsheet with you if you'd like, but it's a little bit hard to follow. So our old fees were real simple. It was fifteen dollars for the base permit and then a dollar for each thousand dollars thereafter, and it rounded up to the nearest whole dollar. So that was easy math. We relied entirely on what the permit purchaser told us what the cost was. I'd like to believe everybody was honest over all the years, but it's hard to say what something costs. You know, and we'd get a lot of people show up and say, well, I don't know what it's going to cost. And we'd work with them to try to help them, but we wanted to move more to a model that was based on square footage and a base fee. Everyone knows if, if they're building something, how many square foot it's going to be. So for residential, new build, addition, new addition, remodels, we went to a one hundred and fifty dollar base fee and ten cents per square foot. And then when you get down to the, the general repair, a one-off electrical, plumbing, or mechanical, it's a, it's a hundred dollar flat fee. And we do have a fifty dollar green tag fee. So a lot of these rates are based on our costs and what it costs us to do this. We accounted for the time to take care of it on administrative side, but also inspections. Like green tag, for example, we have to send a person out to do the inspection. It roughly costs us about fifty dollars a trip by the time we account for time. That inspector's materials and getting them out there. So a lot of that's based in Tyrell, and how many times we're going to have to make a visit and the work we have to do on the office side. When we get to commercial, the base fee ends up for the new build, the new addition, and the remodel of three fifty and plus twenty-five cents per square foot. And then again, we have the, the general permits of the one fifty. There's some additional fees for, you know, a hundred and seventy-five per story. So again, that's just based on, you know, the biggest time consumer and the biggest cost is our inspection fees. Sending people out onsite and how much time they spend there, and the bigger the building is, the more time they spend there. So that's what these fees are based particularly on. There is a pool fee of three fifty. We introduced a plan review fee, which is something we hadn't had in the past, as I mentioned with that plan review permit. That can be a lot of time, so we went with two fifty for up to half acre and a hundred for each additional half acre. We are introducing a fence permit. This is new. Historically, you did not need a fence permit in Terre Haute. It's a twenty-five dollar fee. We wanted to keep it low. But we spend a lot of time and building inspection sends, spends a lot of time discussing fences with neighbors after they're installed. a lot of time discussing fences with neighbors after they're installed. And a lot of city resources go into discussing fences after they're installed. I know good fences make good neighbors, is what they say. I don't know if that's always true. Maybe we're not dealing with good fences all the time, but if there's a way we can head this off ahead of time, I think that's a great permit to have, and I think that's really going to help out with that. We're looking at a $250 per acre land disturbance fee. Again, that's one that did not have a fee before, but we spend a significant amount of time with inspectors, walking the site and plan reviewers reviewing the plans. And then we get to the sign fee, so a portable sign's $25, a pole signs, $3 per square foot with a minimum of 150, and a ground sign's $3 per square foot with a minimum of 150, and you're going to see that for all the signs. And then we get to the condemned properties. So we have a slightly different schedule for those, slightly different fee, since they do require more renewals on shorter periods of time. It looks like a condemned property permit's going to be, you know, the 100, and then the 90-day renewals 25, and the 30-day renewals 15. So that essentially takes us through those. I think that covers all the changes. I've got some of the math I can run you through quickly. I didn't bring my big spreadsheet because I couldn't get it to fit on a page, but we did create, we used 2023 as the model year. That was the only, the latest year that we have full data for a year. I will note, we did throw the casinos permit out because it seemed like a one-off large permit that skewed the data. So in 2023, our actual permit intake fee-wise was $84,857. We did have to do, make some assumptions and run through line by line. Since we didn't collect all the data like square footage, we spent a lot of time going through plans and verifying square footages. The number we came up with, which would be expected from this, would be about $307,990. Then we break it down to the stats for per permit, because that seems like a huge difference. The median difference per permit is about $84 more, and the average difference is about $128. So the big places we're seeing differences are the permits such as roofs. So before, when we had a roof, you were based on the per-dollar cost, but it's going to fall into that $100 for residential general permit, so those actually came in negative and some came in higher. So as far as biggest differences we see, our biggest negative difference was about $3,500, and our biggest positive difference was about $4,400. I chased those pretty hard as far as looking for, I'll note that our $4,400 positive difference, the permit was very small fee for the big amount of work. So I don't know if it was just mistakenly reported on the cost or if it was just a smaller piece of the work, which is possible, because it may have been one of those permits that three different permits got sold for, since we're going to the single permit, we'll track better. But it does seem like quite the outlier, both it was in cost and just it didn't initially really pass the smell test of, does this seem right? Because I think the base permit, I think there's some more fees on some other permits out there from the original. I'm trying to think what else we have. So what you see is not all of our permits went up. Some came down, some went up. We worked with these numbers quite a bit, and then we also made sure that they compared to surrounding communities, and they do across the state. It's within reason. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if I can't answer, I'm sure Jason can answer it for you.
Thank you, Marcus. Would anyone from the public like to comment on General Ordinance 13, 2024?
My name is Don Wayne Hyde, 1411 Popple Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. You're one of the few people that both my liberal side and my conservative side have questions for you. First of all, you're building buildings, for God's sakes. You've got to think about the four main things before you ever start building at all. Soil. You've got to have somebody to go out and inspect where the building is going. Is the soil good or bad? Can it be fixed? That's called inspections. Now, I listened to this entire thing, and I think I heard you mention the word inspection five times at most. Those inspections are the most important thing that a building inspector needs to do, period. Nothing else matters. Soil is one thing. Second thing, what kind of building, you know, how tall, no. How much the bricks, the rocks, whatever it is being built with, can withstand both time and what they're putting on. Will that soil hold up or will it start slowly sinking? All that is part of inspections. You're the building inspector, you're building brand-new buildings. And by the way, the liberal part of me is just astounded that they didn't hear one word from you, sir, about raising the standards. We are in a different time period in the last 10 years, and it's become real apparent that there's going to be new storms that's going to hit us, and those buildings have to be able to withstand both the fire and above all, the storm, the wind. I heard nothing about that, sir. I'd like you to answer that, please.
Marcus?
I'd be happy to address that. So one thing we'll note with the inspections is we're looking at what's changed. We do have an inspection process, and we have key areas that you do have to get inspections and you do have to pass. City Works is a great tool in that, too, by the way. We can't issue a CVO to you for your building if you build it and you do not pass these inspections. We inspect foundations, your soils prior to being poured. We inspect framing rough end, electrical rough end, plumbing rough end, and then we do final inspections as well, and I may have missed some. Did I miss anything, Jason? So we do get out and we do all of the inspections, and again, we've set up a system that does not let us pass this building onto CVO, which would be your final right to use it until those inspections are passed, and having the ability to keep records of that has been a great tool. As far as the building quality goes, you'll note in the section where we updated all the building codes. So we operate off of the latest building codes that are accepted. They're put together by very knowledgeable people who know what they're doing, and they set building codes up, and we just want to make sure to stick with those. That keeps us in line with surrounding communities, the state, and those building codes are set by people that know what they're doing to create a safe environment for natural disasters and fire.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? I will close public comments and open council discussion.
I just have a, just a couple of questions. You may have already answered it because my hearing aids aren't working. What do you consider on residential and commercial, I mean, new build and new additions, pretty self-explanatory, what do you consider a remodel? What does it start at before a fee?
You know, that's a little tougher, and I think there's some case-by-case depending on, but, you know, if you're creating a new space, if you're pulling, so I think what you'll see with the repairs, you see the general, you see the electrical, the plumbing and the mechanical, those are all one trade. So when you start bringing in multiple trades, so, you know, let's say you're doing a project, and we don't know if it's a remodel or a repair yet, you know, we might ask, what caused it? You know, are you fixing something that's broken for a reason or, you know, is this a total rebuild of the space to make it look good? But the other thing we'll look at probably is, you know, how many trades do you attach to this? So if you're doing a project and you have electrical, plumbing, and general contractors applied to it, I think that's probably going to be a remodel because, you know, you're clearly doing a lot more work than just freshening up.
But there's no dollar amount?
There's no dollar threshold. It's going to be based on the type of work, and to be honest, you know, there'll probably be some, it's probably going to be a little bit up to our inspector, so when you purchase a permit on City Works, you're going to go in and you're going to select the type of work that you're doing. You know, we may have some of those that we have to follow up and take another look at, but that's something our inspectors can catch in the field, and we can try to do a good job educating to get that out there. And our phones always open. If somebody has a question, they can call us and we'll guide them through it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda and Jay. For me? Oh. Councilwoman Thompson?
Madam President, you had the advisory board meeting, you had some of the people from the trades come and give input. Was there much pushback, money won on these changes?
We didn't get a whole lot of pushback. We didn't get a whole lot of input either, but I think that's, it's not a bad sign. I think they kind of acknowledged that, you know, we are behind the times. You know, one thing that we sent our messages, one of our messages is that, you know, we want to keep a level playing field for all. So yes, the fees are increased, but it allows us to do our job better and hold everybody accountable under the same standard. And, you know, if you look at the overall cost of construction of, say, a new house or a new building, this is a pretty small percentage.
Right.
And being able to hold everybody the same standard and make sure that everybody hits that same bar seemed like it was a positive note, because, you know, we have a lot of great contractors here in town and surrounding area, and, you know, it's great that they can be rewarded for doing great work rather than somebody bidding lower and maybe not doing the same quality of work.
So there wasn't any sense that this would discourage growth or discourage construction?
No, I didn't really pick that up any. You know, one thing I'll note about, I'm going to jump to our right-of-way ordinance, for example. You know, just to give an example of where we are, you know, we had some concerns after it passed and after it caught on, and we've tried to work with everyone. You know, we even created some new cases for right-of-way permits to let them bundle multiple smaller permits so that they're not paying the big base fee. Where it made sense and where we had an inspector in the area already, because we'd let them do that, so, you know, we're not trying to make money. We're just trying to support the program that helps support them.
And it sounds like you're on par to be self-funded, self-sufficient.
That's the goal. I mean, that's what we want to do. We want the fee, we want the work that we do to create the way that we pay our employees, and it just makes sense because then they're not being paid from other sources to do work that's pretty solely in this location.
Right. Ayil. Thank you. Councilman Chalos?
Marcus, I want to thank you for the work you've done. It looks like it's pretty extensive on this. Several of the department heads got some kudos. I know this is a little off-topic, but I want to thank you also for the response you guys have given us in the 5th District, and how responsive you've been, especially on helping us get this ball rolling on some handicap spots in that 12-points area, and I appreciate that, and I know our folks appreciate that very much. So I didn't want him to go without some kudos also. Everybody else was getting some, so thank you.
Thank you.
Liberal and conservative side, thanks for doing a great job.
Thank you.
You yield?
Ayil. I'd like to give you kudos for yielding.
Councilman Chalos?
Thank you. I did a good job.
Thanks for walking us through all this, Marcus. I read it pretty closely, and many questions you already answered, but I still do have a couple. Starting at page three, the very first thing that you talked about, you pointed out that we're adding the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code to the ordinance. When I went online and found that, I noticed that there was a 2024 version, and why would we use the 2021 version when there's a 2024 version available?
So we've been working on this for quite some time.
Yeah. It may have come out since then, I understand.
I think that may be possible.
No cities have adopted it yet.
The other thing that Jason points out is, you know, if no one else has adopted, you know, I know, I don't know about this one, but I do know, like, building codes, we adopt the same one the state does.
Sure.
And they may not be up to whatever national building code is brought out, but that's a good point, and it's something we should certainly look into.
And hey, I'm not trying to hammer on that. I'm just, it's an honest question, and that's actually a good answer, that nobody else has been the guinea pig for it.
Well, I will add that we did review the 21, and we were pretty happy with it.
Yeah.
Maybe there's more in the 24, but we were pretty pleased with it.
Well, and they're iterative. I mean, you know, it's just going to build on the 2021 code. I get it. So thank you for answering that. Going to page 10, you talked a little bit about condemned property permits, and I noticed under, at the top of page 10, under E, condemned property permits, the middle shall require additional information to complete applications. And one, you know, you mentioned that you asked for a detailed budget, and I'm not clear if that's new or if that was something before we asked them for.
It's fairly new. I mean, it's something we discussed, but we don't have, you know, it was never codified before, and, you know, we've had conversations with our building inspectors as well as Dean. We've got some folks that feel strongly that, you know, there are some steps we need to take to at least make people realize what they're getting into.
Oh, I understand.
And I think a detailed budget, if you do the math and put the work in, you're going to get a real good idea of what you're getting into.
Okay, and actually, then going down from that, there's number five, which is proof of ability to perform the work. What form of proof will you be requiring?
That's a little tough. I mean, it's a little bit vague, and, you know, if you look later in there, inspections, I think you'll see that, you know, we have the right to determine after inspection if someone's capable of the work. I know...
That's after inspection, though, after you've already bought the permit, it's been issued, you've paid the fee.
We would love to see some kind of history. I hate to not give somebody a chance. It'll probably depend on the state of the building and how much it needs to determine how much proof it is. I think if we have, I guess I'm saying it may be case-by-case on some extent, if we have a three-story brick building and somebody's wanting to take that on, we're going to need some proof that you have experience or you're hiring contractors that have experience with this type of work in the past. But also keep in mind with the inspections is that we have a renewal on these every 30 or every 90 days, so that gives us the opportunity to see what they've got done, what type of work it is, and if they're making the right progress and heading in the right direction.
Well, you know, your example of somebody taking on a three-story brick building is apt. That's exactly the lens that I see all this stuff through, because in the late 90s, I took on a three-story brick building downtown and naively, didn't know what I was getting into, didn't have a detailed budget, eventually made it all the way through the project, but I would have hated to have been told no because I didn't have experience or couldn't show, you know, to your satisfaction, the proof of ability to perform the work. And, you know, that's more of a general comment than anything else, but it does feed into one of my larger concerns here, and it echoes a question that Councilwoman Thompson asked. I would hate to see these new rules and fees discourage work in 12-points, for example. Got a bunch of broken buildings up there, and what we're going to really need is people who are willing to do a lot of the work themselves and able to commit resources, and they might not know exactly what they're getting into on the front end as they look at a broken, in this case, in some cases, two-story brick buildings. And when I think about what's happened downtown in the last 25 years, it was naive, well, good meeting people like George Azar and myself and Boo Lloyd and Ben Orman and Fong Lee and John Mulliken. These are all people who took on old brick buildings and didn't really maybe fully understand what we were getting into, but we all came out of it, and I think it would have been hard on the front end with the kinds of rules that are being proposed if somebody was taking a really hard stance with us to get permission to take the risk. Does that make sense?
It does. I've two have been given that chance to take on... It does. I've, too, have been given that chance to take on a building when I didn't maybe know what I was getting into. Um, it wasn't a three-story brick building. Um, and one thing I will note is, we wanted to make sure not to discourage people from doing their own work in here. Um, so, you know, I think if you own a building, um, it's a little tougher. If you own, say, a commercial building, you would have to be a licensed contractor. But a homeowner, I think, should have the right to do maintenance and work to their own home. Um, I strongly believe that. I'm, I'm in that same boat. Uh, one thing to keep in mind is this is just on condemned property. So, this, these are properties that are deemed unsafe for people to be in.
Right.
And that's, that's one key, is that if, if we've determined that this building is a risk to anyone in it, or, you know, maybe in the event of a brick building, people that may be outside on the sidewalk or in the street in the risk of a collapse, we do want to have some proof that, you know, and it's, it's going to be case by case. Um, it'd be nice to know they know what they're doing. And, you know, we may be able to glean a lot of that from, uh, their plans that they've put together, uh, their budget. Uh, sometimes those tell a lot of stories, um, that you know they're prepared and ready to do it. But there, there could be some instances, again, while I promote doing your own work, I, I do all my own work on my own home.
Sure.
On some large buildings or particularly risky buildings that, you know, there may be, have to sub, be a subcontractor. Uh, we don't want to put people in a position that may not be able to prove that they're capable or the public on a nearby street or sidewalk. Um, I, I'm, I'm glad that there's still people out there willing to do it. And I'm, I'm glad it's worked out for a lot. But, um, with the downtown example, um, you know, if you're in a corner building, there's a street and there's a sidewalk on two sides of your building that could have the public on it, um, on it at any point in time. And if, if a building is bad enough to be condemned, um, there may be risk that, that something bad could happen there.
Well, and, and I'll note that none of the examples I gave were condemned buildings. They were all buildings that were, um, okay enough to not be condemned when we started. Um, in that same section, uh, going down to N, um... Wait a minute. I'm sorry. Going down to K, uh, the applicant has no outstanding fees in past due status with the Terre, City of Terre Haute. Those include sewage fees?
Um, you know, to be honest, I didn't think that through. Our, our main implication was building permits, um, that we could search in the same system. Um, but I guess if you read it like that, yeah, it, it could.
And how about trash fees, which are also paid through the sewer bill? But if you don't pay your sewer bill, you're not paying your trash fee either.
I, I believe that probably would be accurate. Um, again, our intention was primarily just permit and inspection. Um, but it does broadly say the City of Terre Haute.
I only ask because it occurred to me as I was reading it. Um, and then, um, you alluded at the bottom of this section in N, uh, that, you know, the very last sentence of it says, "This fee shall be evaluated annually." You alluded to the fact that a fee will be set, but I don't see any fee actually set in here.
It's, it's not set in here?
This is, I'm talking about the amount that goes back to the, uh, to the general fund from the engineering non-reverting fund that, that it all accrues to. Do you have a sense of what that will be before it's amended?
Yes. So, right.
After being evaluated annually?
So, yeah, right now, um, in next year's budget, we've, we've put in a $100,000 fee.
It's $100,000 for, uh, for starters. Okay. Thanks. That's, that's a good answer. Um, and then my last question about all this is, um, as you noted, there are a lot of permits hanging on buildings, some of which have been hanging on buildings for years. How does this ordinance deal with grandfathering or lack thereof or all of those existing permits?
So, that's a little bit of a tough one. Um, you know, I, I think if you have an existing permit and you bought it under the existing rule, to some extent, you should follow the rules you purchased it under. Um, eventually, those will all disappear.
They will, yeah.
Um, with time. So, I, I think that's the safest, cleanest way to, to do that. Going forward, you'll have an expiration date. Uh, but when those permits were purchased, there, there wasn't an expiration date other than what was laid out in the city code previously. And I, I could flip through. I think it was 180 days after you stopped work or 90 days.
I don't remember, but, yeah, I, I know that there's some number that doesn't seem to be enforced.
It's, it's tough. So, uh, we're looking forward to having an expiration date just so that we can better track how things are going.
Marcus, I hope that my, that these questions don't give the appearance that I'm somehow against this. I'm not. I'm in favor of it, and I applaud you for bringing us updates to this part of the city code. I yield.
No. All good questions. Appreciate it.
Any other council discussion, comments, questions?
Madam President.
Councilman Dinkle?
There's no further questions. I move that we take action on General Ordinance 132024.
Second.
We have a motion to take action on General Ordinance 132024 made by Councilman Dinkle, seconded by Councilman Nation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can now take action on General Ordinance 132024.
Madam President.
Councilman Dinkle?
I move for approval of General Ordinance 132024.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion to approve General Ordinance 132024 made by Councilman Dinkle, seconded by Councilman Nation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? General Ordinance 132024 is approved. Thank you very much, Marcus and Jason.
Thank you. And I'll add, um, this doesn't, doesn't take effect until January 1, and once we get some data in, we'll circle back and get you some, get you some results to have some.
Thank you very much. Michelle?
General Ordinance 172024, amending city code, Chapter 6, Article 5, Division 2, Section 6-96, Garbage and Trash Regulations. I would like to point out, uh, when it was originally filed, it said General 15. It's really General 17. And unfortunately, your printed copy did not look like that.
Thank you, Michelle. Petitioner?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Michael Wright, City Attorney. What you have before you is a ordinance updating, uh, the garbage provision of the Indiana Code, or of the city code. An update in Article 5, Public Safety Regulations. The new language is essentially to, uh, ensure that the trash receptacles that are commercial and industrial are of such a quality as to maintain their original shape. We've had instances where under our current ordinance, they, uh, dumpsters, you know, have, uh, not been winterized, rusted through, debris spilling out onto parking lots. We've, uh, tried to deal that, deal with that through code enforcement. But an update to the ordinance, uh, we believe was in order to ensure that there was no question, uh, about whether or not just having a dumpster, regardless of its quality, satisfied the ordinance. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh...
Thank you.
...related to the modification.
Uh, anyone from the public wish to comment on General Ordinance 172024?
Donald Hyde, 1411 Public Street, Carroll, Indiana. Yes, as a citizen of Terre Haute for 70 years and watched the trash come forward and get better and better. Yeah, one problem that I noticed, and I say this as a, just a citizen who notices it, and not in just one trash can. Those plastic trash cans, and I've watched them being picked up and the metal things squeezing the plastic. And these metal things are squeezing plastic that's not all that heavy and not all that strong. And then they dump them in. Well, eventually, there's a crack or two left in those things. And if that's what you're talking about, um, I've also seen a lot of plastic, uh, trash bags that go up and are made out of plastic. They dump the trash out. Not very much is dumped anywhere else, because I pick it up every goddamn week. I don't have a problem with it, because it's not that much. However, in all fairness to both you and everybody else, maybe we ought to look away instead of ignoring it or letting it go. Is there a way we can fix? Is there a development in this general, this area where they can look at some of these trash cans and come up with a way to fix them? And I don't mean fix them permanently, but fix them enough to where, uh, it slows down their, uh, aggression. Otherwise, about 10 years from now, we're going to have to replace every trash can we bought. And that's taxpayer money doing that, not anybody else's money. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Mr. Wright, if you'd like to address Mr. Hyde's comments?
Well, uh, I believe he was talking more about residential trash receptacles, if I understood him correctly. And, and this is really not related, uh, I mean, it is related to that, but I think the primary issue we were seeking to redress was commercial and, and industrial through this modification. Uh, the manner in which the receptacles are, you know, that is a republic, uh, process. And I believe they do it that way to achieve efficiency and manpower and, and get all the city streets picked up, uh, you know, as often as they do. And I don't have any, you know, issue as to how they do that. I mean, that is ultimately their prerogative. And I believe, in my experience, when I've run into instances where their equipment has done damage to a dumpster, they have been, uh, upfront about replacing it. So, I, with that, I wouldn't have any more to say about Mr. Hyde's comments.
Thank you. Uh, there's no further public comments. I'll close public comments and open council discussion.
Madam President.
Councilman Nation.
Michael, this is, uh, great. I have, um, noted that, you know, some failed lids and holes in dumpsters caused trash to blow around. Uh, we've picked it up downtown for decades. This is one of these, uh, things, housekeeping things that needed to be done a long time ago. Uh, that said, I look up, I, I appreciate you or whoever prepared this ordinance, including the whole section. And when I read it, I thought about how some of the rest of it probably needs to be updated, too, just to reflect the reality of our current trash contract, which we've now had for 20 years and which I think I understand that we just upped, re-upped for another 20 years.
It was not a 20-year extension, but the newest extension, yes, does take it, uh, yeah, 2037, I believe. So, I think it's...
Okay.
Several, more than a decade from now.
Okay. Uh, so, I, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. Um, but, but like under Section B, it says of the existing code, which isn't really what we're talking about, and forgive me, but, um, "It shall be the responsibility of the owner, occupant, or less see of any building, structure, or property where trash or garbage or trash is generated to cause or to provide or cause to be provided containers, receptacles, or dumpsters." Um, and I think that that's not a requirement anymore under the trash contract, is it? I think it's our trash contractor who is required to provide those now.
That's right.
So, you know, we've got a, we've got language in our city code still that conflicts with what our trash contract says.
I'm sorry, Councilman, are you talking about the...
I'm sorry, I'm talking about sections...
Outside of the requested modi, the whole ordinance?
Yes, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm talking about section, I, I see that you're on your computer and we're looking at a piece of paper. Uh, it's Section 696, Garbage and Trax, Trash Regulations. Uh, Section A looks okay. Uh, Section B, though, still refers to the condition that we all, um, uh, lived under before Republic brought the blue barrels when we signed the trash contract over 20 years ago. Used to be, we had to buy our own trash cans and, uh, provide those. And now, we don't because Republic has a contract. Section B still says that if you live in, own, or lease, uh, a place, a residential place, you need to provide your own trash can. Am I reading that right?
It doesn't specifically say... It doesn't, yeah. Yes, you are.
So, I, I guess what I'm saying is, uh, and I don't, I don't want to amend this on the floor or anything like that.
Yeah.
But I think that the whole section could be updated to just reflect what we've actually got, what we've negotiated in our contract. So, that if somebody's trying to figure out as a resident what their responsibility is, they don't have two conflicting parts of the code. One that is the code and then ones that, and then another that is the contract. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. No, I mean, I think, just thinking about it, you know, I'm not exactly sure when the original, uh, ordinance came into...
It says 1994, uh, and then it was updated in 2002 is the way I read this.
Yeah. Special ordinance 8594. So, yeah, I, I have no, uh, objection to, you know, taking in a, taking it back, looking at an amendment to Section B to more accurately reflect how things are conducted now.
And I would also, I would add that the, again, I'm thinking from a user point of view, from a citizen point of view. Um, not just the provision of the containers, but that whole next category or paragraph, rather, uh, says how trash is to be handled and, uh, gives you the option of putting bags or boxes of trash out next to the contain, next to your trash cans that you've provided the night for. And back before this automated system that we have under the trash contract, that, you know, there was a person on the back of the trash truck who picked that stuff up and threw it in. Now, there's one operator who does not get out of the truck or is loathe to get out of the truck. And this is not what we want citizens to do anymore. We've given them, as Mayor Sakman pointed out in the meeting where he informed us that the, uh, that the contract had been, uh, re-upped. Um, he pointed out that we are giving citizens under the provisions of this contract a 55-gallon tote that's the biggest size available. We don't want them to put bags of trash or boxes of trash on the ground, ever, uh, and, and expect that those will be picked up. There is language in our trash contract, as I understand it, that provides for brush or leaves, up to 10 bags, and bundles of sticks that are prepared in a specific way with twine around them and all that. The, those, those provisions are out there, but this is about garbage. Uh, and in my neighborhood, if you leave a bag of garbage on the street overnight, raccoons come and get in it, dogs get in it, it gets strewn about. So, as long as we're in this section of the code, I'd really like to see this cleaned up so that citizens who go online, try to figure out what the rules are, see the actual rules under our trash contract.
Well, yeah, I've got, uh, no problem taking this back. Uh, I mean, obviously, there would have to be a motion to, uh, take any action on this tonight. But, you know, introducing an amendment after some consultation with you and, and other council members who have feelings on it. But, yeah, I do not believe there is any, uh, pushback from the administration as to bringing this ordinance up to date with how things actually operate and making sure that people are not, yeah, being encouraged to leave garbage out, uh, not in a container.
Well, I'd appreciate that. And procedurally, I mean, this doesn't have to slow things down a lot. We, we could deal, do it next week.
I agree. Yeah. No, that's what I'm saying, Todd. I, I agree with that. There, there's, yeah. We, I don't have any problem with that. And, um, yeah, we'd make time early next week to do that.
Thanks. Um, procedurally, how do we do this, Michelle? Procedurally, how do we do this, Michelle?
Just clarify which option you're going with.
I'd like to see it come back next week with, in a slightly updated version.
In an amendment, I mean.
It just take no action.
Take no action.
It's going to automatically carry over to next week.
Yeah.
And then an amendment can be prepared.
Introduced.
You'll just vote to amend and vote to pass.
Thanks. And I appreciate everybody's patience with me as we talk about one of my favorite topics.
So is it the pleasure of the council that we move this to next week? We don't need to do anything.
Can I ask one question?
Certainly.
I think if you're going to amend this, you need to decide what the difference is between garbage, which it states in here, and a box.
Okay.
I mean, I've seen, you know, neighbors put out a box of, I don't know, it's trash, but it's not garbage, but they can't get it into the 55-gallon dumpster.
Right, right.
So, you know.
The, earlier in the provision, Councilman Azar, earlier in that section, there is some definitions. There is a definition for garbage in 695B. It provides all organic household waste.
695.
Awful animal and vegetable matter prepared. I mean, yeah, it does not, it's pretty specific to what I would consider like almost, you know, restaurant-grade organic waste, you know. I mean, but I understand your point on making sure that items that can't fit in the container are not being.
And we don't have that part of it.
Yeah, no, yeah, I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, one more thing.
Councilman Nation.
George, if I may, you might remember when there were separate pickups for garbage and trash.
Yeah, there's.
And I think that this language and these definitions probably date back to like the 1940s or 50s.
Yeah.
When.
I don't remember that far back.
Well, I'm just saying.
Horse and wagon.
Right. And then people burned some of their stuff, too.
I'm so old, I don't remember history.
Out of control again.
Ayew.
When you guys start talking about this, I feel like I'm out of control. All right. Michelle. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilman DeBol.
Well, I guess this conversation's been going on for a while, so I might as well ask a question. I'm looking at Section A on here.
Yes.
It being unlawful for the owner or occupant to have any trash, garbage on property, right, on a city lot. Do you know what the current fine is for that?
Up to $300.
Up to $300? Has that been the fine for some time, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would add to that, Curtis, the ordinance specifies, I mean, I would tell you in my experience, I wouldn't think this has been implemented very many times, but the ordinance provides that each day is a separate violation. So that, you know, in theory, that $300 could be every day. But, I mean, I think in practical experience that that's not been, it's probably been threatened, I'm sure, but I don't know how many times it's been utilized.
I imagine your problem, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Good.
So I guess I will prolong the agony and add one question. So this will become effective as soon as it passes the council, right, and mayor signs it? Are we going to give a grace period to some folks to be able to comply with this? I know one example I'm thinking of is the annex behind housing on, by issuing housing on.
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean, I haven't talked with Brandon about it, but given that we're taking it back, you know, to make these other adjustments, I don't think there's a problem about having a conversation about a start date for the ordinance so that everybody understands what the rules are.
Time to comply with the new rules.
Certainly.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, now.
I don't trust you.
Michelle, next item on the agenda.
General Ordinance 182024, amending City Code, Chapter 4, Article 25, Section 4-371, mobile vendors' business license prerequisites. You must take a vote to take action.
Petitioner?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, Mike Wright, city attorney. What you have before you is a modification to the city code to ensure that any mobile vendor who's registering with the city has also registered with the state for food and beverage tax purposes. So that is the sole modification in the request, and I believe it's pretty self-explanatory, the reasons behind that. But I'm happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Okay, any public comment on General Ordinance 182024?
Donald Hyde, 1411 Public Street, Terrell, Indiana. This time I'll have to be my liberal self. My question is this. Is the number not high enough as they are? Because if you keep adding to the people's ability to go out and work, I know a lot of the people I hear, I watch the news, and I hear the people from Park County talking about the Cover Bridge Festival. Great place, and by the way, I wish Terrell had such a place. However, one thing they did say is that they were doing it themselves. These aren't like people that are hired with big signs. These are people that are 40, 50 years old, trying to earn a little extra money for a week or two. Now, if you make everybody buy these things and have to have the state one as well, a lot of these people aren't going to be able to do that. I'm not sure that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you. I would say that this does not have any fee associated with it. Okay. This is a proof of registration with the Indiana Taxpayer Information Management engine to ensure that the mobile food vendors are set up to collect the local food and beverage tax that is paid by the person receiving the items. There's a 1% local food and beverage tax on food and beverage in Vigo County, and this modification is to ensure that those mobile vendors, in conjunction with all the other approvals that they have to receive through the Department of Health, are also registering with the state so they collect that tax from the consumer.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I'll close public comments and open council discussion.
Madam President.
Councilman Nation.
If there's no discussion, I move that we take, oh, okay, sorry.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Should this be labeled "mobile food vendors"?
I mean.
We have all kinds of vendors, they sell things, but I know this is specific for food.
Yeah.
They say "mobile food vendors."
It's a change to the article, yeah. I don't, I think there's, let me see in the whole code. What you have before you is just, you know, obviously, that one section that's being modified.
In the code, under 4369, it does make references to mobile food vendors.
Okay.
Ayew.
Good point.
We could amend this, though, and just go ahead and ask it.
I don't know if you can amend the article itself.
What section is that, Michelle? 469?
4369.
4369.
Right above that is also the definition.
I mean, in.
Derek, bust a laugh.
In, in looking at the whole ordinance, it's, it only applies to food. I mean, in the, "Mobile vendors" is the Article 25. In Section 4-369, it is unlawful to locate a mobile food vendor unit in the city without first having secured a license to do so as provided by this article. And then the business license prerequisites in 4-371 are what line that out. So this section only apply, I agree with you that it would make more sense logically to have that, you know, change in the article name and have no problem with that, but I believe as the code is currently constructed, it only applies to food vendors. So I don't think it, another business, there's another section of the code that deals with non-food business licenses.
There is another section?
Yes.
Does it say "non-food vendors," mobile?
Mobile vendors.
The other, the non-food?
Peddlers.
Pedler.
That's our 19th-century code.
That's another.
Is that your license, George?
Order to.
I remember those very well.
I do have one question. Can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, are you done? If they have to register with the Indiana Secretary of State as a business, that would automatically mean that as a business that sells, and they have an identification number, they automatically have to pay sales tax. So why wouldn't they automatically be required for the food and beverage? Isn't that automatic in Vigo County? It's not?
I mean, because you would have.
I don't remember if we registered for that, and I know we pay it, but I don't.
Yeah, you would if you declared that Vigo County was going to be where you were going to operate your business. Then the state would say, okay, well, Vigo County has a food and beverage tax, you also need to take this additional step. This, we're talking about mobile food vendors, people coming in, we're just saying, you've got to show us proof that you have done that.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, for most brick-and-mortar stores. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Nation.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we take action on General Ordinance 182024.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to take action on General Ordinance 182024 made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Anton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Who can take action on General Ordinance 182024?
Madam President.
Councilman Nation.
I move for approval of General Ordinance 182024.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to approve General Ordinance 182024 made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Anton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? General Ordinance 1824 is approved. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
Michelle?
Special Ordinance 372024, reselling a property located at 1250 Locust Street. Area planning gave a favorable with recommendations, with conditions recommendation. As you were aware, there was a little bit of confusion, and the petitioner and their attorney are not here tonight, but they will be here next week.
We don't need to do anything on this either, other than just move it to next week.
Any public comment on Special Ordinance 372024, which we're going to table or move to next week on table? Going to move to next week.
I don't know what you don't know.
Okay, thank you for acknowledging that, Mr. Wright.
Way to go, Don.
Michelle?
Resolution 25. 2024, transfer of $113,500 in the motor vehicle highway budget.
I didn't know I'd be presented tonight, but let me do my best here. Good evening. So basically, what's going on is there was some excess money in principal on notes and interest on notes in the MBH fund. So he's utilized that money for the purchase of two new pickup trucks, because he says that he has not had any new pickup trucks since 2019, and they have lost five pickup trucks in that time due to accidents and deterioration. So much-needed trucks. And then $21,000 from the interest on notes line to longevity. There was a budget mistake that was made. I think this stems back to 2022. I think that longevity was being, was being posted into the wrong salary line, so when the budget was carrying over, it was like, oh, they only needed $5,500, so they were budgeting lower than what they needed. So that's what happened. So next year, it is corrected in the 2025 budget. And they obviously just need a little bit of money in their office supplies line that's gone over. Basically, all they got.
Does anyone from the public wish to comment on Resolution 2524?
It says the highway department budget, so it's highway.
Mm-hmm.
No public comments? Close public comments, open council discussion? Any council discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Dinkle?
There's no discussion. I move that we approve Resolution 2524.
I would like to second that.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2524 made by Councilman Dinkle, seconded by Councilman Thalos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2524 is approved.
Thank you.
Resolution 2624, transfer of $1,800 in the Human Relations Commission's budget.
Petitioner?
Hello, President Boland, members of the city council, A.T. Ryan, Director of the Human Relations Commission. The commission is requesting approval of the transfer of a total of $1,800, 1,000 of which will be allocated from services contractual to the purchase of equipment, and 800 from instruction to office supplies. The commission plans to use the $1,000 in purchase of equipment to buy technology, including a TV, a TV stand, and a virtual meeting camera microphone system, all of which will allow us to better host virtual meetings, as that is the norm these days. And then the commission will use the remaining $800 in office supplies to purchase toner for our printer. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did you say toner?
Toner, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on Resolution 2624?
First of all, what she said, I don't care about, I mean, it's fine, and you shouldn't care about it either. However, on this list I'm looking at, and I wish you guys would look at it, too, the last article saying one and then two here, two, unless there's a mistyping here or something, they're talking about an amount of money that's $1,800,000. I've not heard that mentioned at all today.
$1,800.
Total $1,800. There's a period there.
There's no period on this one.
He is right.
I'm not talking about this here, this.
No, there's a period. Comet 800, period 00.
It's not a million?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, mine says a million right there.
Don't you wish, A.T.?
Don't you wish, A.T.?
Yeah, that's a lot of toner.
As far as what you just said.
Yeah. All good. Thank you.
All right, close public comments, open council discussions. Anybody from council? Anything to discuss?
Madam President, if there be no discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we approve Resolution 26, 2024.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve Resolution 26, 2024, made by Councilman DeBonne, seconded by Councilman Nation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 26, 2024 is approved. I think I want A.T. to do my shopping for me, if he can buy all of that-
For A.T.
-equipment for $1,000. Okay, we've got a problem now, because we had plans to adjourn this meeting prior to your arrival, so we all need to work out.
Oh, go ahead, you're gonna make me cry.
Oh, it's Chris, we can do it.
They have, well, it's up to you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn, made by Councilman Azar, seconded by almost everybody else. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.